The next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. I will now turn this over to Lupe Ramos Montini, Chairperson of the Board's Legislative Committee.
Okay, Marty, do they have their copy of it?
Marilyn has copies. I emailed it last week and then we have copies. Remind everyone.
Okay, so we can go home. We'll get to this item. And we have given you a booklet now. We're really working hard on all these different things, items that are priorities to the members of the State Board. So the Legislative Committee, Lupe, Ramos Montini, Judy Pritchard, Nikki Snyder, and Tiffany Tilley come before you with this report. And so I will hand it over to Marty. But I know that you read the page nine, which is the last page in this document, is the statement supporting the full range of opportunities in the Michigan merit curriculum. And so that's what one item we will be voting on. That's an action item. And Judy will be presenting that item to us a little later. So Marty?
Yeah, so the Legislative Committee met on the 28th of May, is that correct? And so there are, in this report, there are some bills that legislative updates that we have discussed before, like the post-Labor Day start, has passed the House Education Committee, been in the House Ways and Means Committee for consideration. There are no plans that we understand to move those. Public innovation districts, those bills were discussed, I believe, at last month's meeting. They did get reported out of the House Education Committee. And we opposed, the department opposed those bills last, no, maybe they didn't get out of committee. They're not out of committee yet, are they?
Sorry.
Are those out of committee yet, the Pitt bill? They are not, but they're being discussed in the House Education Committee. The department opposed the bills last session, and we have opposed them this session as written. They continue to receive consideration in the House Education. Other bills that were discussed last meeting is the bills to amend the Michigan merit curriculum. And you can see on page five, a brief description of what those do. And then I believe Cassandra had requested last month to prepare a statement on those bills. And so I'll pass it over to Judy.
All right, thank you. As Lupe has indicated on page nine, we have a statement that we have drafted that hopefully encompasses a couple of things. One is, obviously, oppose any attempt to change requirements in the merit curriculum related to the arts or CTE because of some of the bills that are currently in process over there. But we also recognize the fact that there needs to be flexibility sometimes, especially for high school students. Either get themselves into credit problems, or they get into credit problems, I shouldn't blame the student. Or other things can happen and they might need to adjust their curriculum. And that certainly happens with special needs students sometimes, where we have to do a personal curriculum with them. So we tried to also include in there some language about, and that's what you'll see in the last paragraph, last couple of sentences, about the fact if there does need to be any changes in the curriculum or in course of study, that that, that parents and counselors obviously be involved in that, which is kind of the practice now, hopefully, in most high schools. So anyways, so there it is. So on your mark, it said.
I'm sorry, yes. Do we have to make a motion? I'm sorry. Are we making a motion to adopt the statement?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the statement.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. And now we'll open it to discussion. Cassandra?
So I read this several times, and I have to admit, I didn't quite understand what we were saying.
Okay.
So are we opposing, are we supporting, are we taking no stance whatsoever?
Well, the first two paragraphs basically say, you know, we support a well-rounded curriculum. So that's, that's more setup. Really, the first sentence of the last paragraph, "We oppose any attempt to change state law that may lead local districts to eliminate vital programs in the arts and world languages," because that had been specifically what we had talked about at the table here. But then again, as I said, we had this discussion about, but we also recognize sometimes there needs to be flexibility. So we added that last part of that fourth paragraph. The first two paragraphs really are just indicating that the board, you know, supports a well-rounded curriculum.
But the third paragraph kind of alludes to the fact that we're supporting it, and then the fourth paragraph alludes to the fact that we don't support it. That's where my confusion's coming in.
You mean, starting with sentence two in that fourth paragraph? Because the first...
No, I'm talking about the third paragraph talks about the arts and languages, but then throws in computer science, computer coding, career and technical education programs.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And then it says, "But we oppose any attempt to change state law that may lead local school districts to eliminate vital programs in the arts and world languages." But that's, that was kind of the point of the paragraph ahead, is that by, by giving that quote-unquote flexibility, it might lead local districts to eliminate the arts programs.
Maybe we don't need that third paragraph.
Well, the discussion in the committee meeting was what Judy was saying, that flexibility is needed. We were discussing the bills and the fact that during the legislative process, bills change. And so the idea that the, that the board would oppose a bill knowing that it may change down the road, we discussed the fact, let's make a statement, possibly make a value statement on what the board does support, and instead of coming out actually against bill numbers, which may, you know, the language in a bill may change. So I think the, the, the language in the third paragraph states the value that the board would support, that the board supports all of these ideas. And then the second, or the last paragraph said, basically, that the board would oppose any change that may lead a local district to eliminate a vital program. Even recognizing flexibility, it would not, some districts would say, "Let's not offer applied arts at all. Let's not apply, let's not offer foreign language at all. Let's not offer this a lot, you know, CTE or whatever."
Right.
So what this says is that, you know, the board still recognizes flexibility is needed, but let's not, let's not pass a law that would encourage or lead a district to eliminate a total program.
But we're wide open to edit here.
So if, if I were to edit, I would just remove everything after that first sentence in the last paragraph, and then I think it, I think that the confusion goes away when you don't say, "We oppose eliminating, but we recognize flexibility." Because I think you take care of that flexibility point in paragraph three.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You don't think we need, starting with, we do recognize that in some instances, blah, 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 from that point forward.
Yeah, I think you just end it with a declarative statement, "We oppose any attempt to," that will lead to the elimination of the arts programs.
Stronger that way, too. But, you know, I do, you know, because I know in special, that we're trying to get more use of the personal curriculums to help more kids graduate.
Right. Yeah, I'm not opposed to flexibility at all. I just don't want it to lead to an elimination of...
An entire program.
Arts and languages.
Yeah, and look at paragraph three, I think that it gives the opportunity to be flexible and, and provide opportunities to successfully complete classes in language arts or whatever.
Okay, so keep paragraph three and just use the first sentence of paragraph four as kind of the conclusion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
It seems unlikely with the seal of bilinguism that, that world languages would go away.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Nikki.
It seems unlikely that with the seal of bilinguism and ID program, am I speaking correctly, unlikely that world languages would go away as a result of leading flexibility in this capacity.
Yeah, I would say, though, but like, if you think of very rural areas, it's really hard to find people to teach those classes. So if, if you say you don't have to have them anymore, then I could see, yeah, they go away.
I'm, I'm more concerned about the student who's trying to get flexibility on an Algebra II requirement or CTE has or needs, you know, has an opportunity to take a two-year CTE, is struggling with the Algebra II, and needs that flexibility. And that's where, you're right, Michelle, we need to encourage the districts in any way we can. And I know MDE does that. Look, you need to look, you know, at each individual student. It doesn't happen with a whole big group of students, but they get to be juniors and seniors, and we're trying to get a math credit done when the students start skipping school because there's no interest to come anymore. So those are the specialized cases.
Yeah, but, but to Cassandra's point, even, even my children, if I didn't say, "You are going to take Spanish," because then they would have never taken it. So if the school doesn't provide that opportunity and have this requirement, they're never going to. And we live in a global society now where languages are very important. Who knows where they're in, you know? So I, I think the more we encourage schools to, to offer them...
Right.
The, the more apt to, for students to, to enroll. So that's, that's why I'm opposed to, but we want it to be nicy, nicy about it.
Sure, yeah. There's nothing wrong with, I don't mind flexibility, like I said.
You know, maybe in the, in the third paragraph, instead of providing, should be provided opportunities, maybe we should, we can say also, should be provided flexibility to successfully, and then we have that word there, too. And then we eliminate all this other flexibility stuff. And we just change opportunities. Opportunities and flexibility, to me, are the same thing. But if you want that word flexibility, we could change the word opportunities.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think you have to keep opportunities.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Flexibility means, well, I could do it, or I don't have to do it, I have that flexibility.
Yes, no, but, but we're giving them the flexibility, the opportunities of being successful. So if they don't take those, these other classes, then they're still going to be successful because we're, you know, promoting that in our, well, anyway. So I'm okay with eliminating the rest.
Is there agreement?
I think we, I think we have a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Yes. If we make the motion.
Judy? And you second it.
And I, and I...
Second it.
Yeah. Okay. Now we can vote.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the intent, I just, some of the, some of the statements in there, I have problems with the top ten and ten, twenty workforce development things that I don't think that I have had concerns with along. So I, while I support the intent, I'm not going to vote no, but I'm going to pass just because I can't sign on to something that says I support something I don't.
Just a reminder, the State Board did approve Michigan's top ten and ten strategic plan on February of 2016.
Okay. We can vote on it now.
We can, we can vote, okay. So I'll start with all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And abstentions?
Is that the same thing as abstentions?
Just a couple other things there. On the budget, the state budget is moving through the process through each house, the first house, and there have been discussions on, as to how long the process is going to take. I know that the governor on Mackinac Island said she'd like to get it done by the end of July, no later, although there's, there's question about that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things on her whole budget plate, on her whole budget proposal that go in, that go into this conversation. So we look forward to an early passage of the state budget. There are a couple other bills that you might hear about. There's a package of bills about financial disclosure, and there's one bill that would require, require the State Board to do financial disclosure, also, you know, all the statewide elected legislators, Supreme Court members. Basically, it's a transparency package of bills to do financial, required financial disclosures. And introduced also today as Senate joint resolution, must be House Joint Resolution K. You recall, last session, Representative Kelly introduced a joint resolution to eliminate the Board of Education and the state superintendent and make that office director an appointment of the governor. That also has been reintroduced this session, just today, I think. So just, you may hear about this. It still needs the supermajority in both houses to pass before it even goes to the voters because you're mending the state constitution. So just to keep, yeah, Hornberger, I believe, introduced it, who is the chair of the House Education Committee.
Really?
Yeah.
I had, there was some package of bills that, that I was kind of surprised not to see on here, maybe I'm missing it, is the one that would amend the state constitution to, around education, to, it was, came out, was in the House Education Committee. But it would make it so it's a, that it would be a constitutional requirement, or it would be a requirement that we provide an adequate education, or something like that. It was, this one I got in the, in these things that I get from GONWA, and I thought I had forwarded it on to folks on committee. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, Caroline, do you want to?
There's a whole series of them, they're all Democrat-sponsored, but you know.
Yeah, but one of the resolutions that passed for the constitution, it went right to that.
To that, but yeah, because I would, you know, I think that's something that the board should support, that, you know, we're all about accountability, might as well hold the state accountable, you know?
We'll add that to your, to your list, okay?
Yeah, because I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's not one just to put on a backburner list. I think when we're caring about, you know, the lawsuits around literacy and all this kind of stuff, one of the reasons why there's, that people, you know, other states have it in their constitution, and it's a real flaw in our constitution. And it's why our adequacy studies don't get any, they don't, they're not getting the, the push that they should have because we don't have, other states have, we have to provide an adequate education, we have nothing, just have to provide an institution, thank you. So I think it's something that's, as we're, I think it's something that should be, it's easy to me to support those, and they need, the folks out there are trying to support public education, and we should be supporting them. So that's all. I, I do not think it should be a backburner.
Okay.
I think it's, anyway.
Michelle, we'll add that to your list of priorities, all right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I will write up a statement to propose, and I will draft that for the next meeting.
Pass that on to Legislative Committee?
Yep, can you send it to us, please?
I will, and I will also propose it at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Lupe?
Judy, you have anything else?
No. Okay, now I'll go to Tiffany before Nasby.
Well, no, no, I want, I want...
Sorry, we're still on this, sorry.
I want us to add to my list of priorities. I have about social workers, I want to also add to strengthen regulations for parapros in the classroom, their qualifications, and making sure that they, they are sufficiently staffed. And compensation as well.
I know you were...
And then I wanted to make sure that what I talked about earlier would be in, in basically a statement, and, you know, the language could change, but when the state of Michigan considers, considers intervening in local districts, the local leadership must be at the table to develop the plan going forward. So something to that tone.
Yeah, were we talking about doing that moving forward, or we talked about doing that today, as far as the, the thought around Benton Harbor and any plan that's on the table now, or moving forward?
We can release a statement, but also...
Well, we have one, don't we? Did we, did we make a motion last, at the retreat?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we delivered that to the governor.
But, but I want this to be across the board, to go to the legislators.
Okay, because we never opposed the proposal because we couldn't, I mean, we never opposed the proposal at the time because the proposal had not been presented.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we, we opposed that the local board had, that, that no plan moved forward without the local board being at the helm.
At the table.
So I, I would like to have a statement opposing the, the current proposal.
That was my initial recommendation that day, yeah.
But we were, we were in an awkward space. So I mean, I think that, I thank Sheila for the letter that she wrote, it definitely captured the, the discussion, but, so I don't know. And we were also talking about just closure in, in general earlier today, and we said that we were waiting to the legislative meeting. So are we going to move that someplace else? I would like to, I would like to make a statement today about Benton Harbor, that we oppose closures and that we oppose the, the current plan that's on the table.
The governor's plan, or the state of Michigan's plan.
So are you making a motion?
I move that we make a statement.
I second the motion.
But we don't know, can I just say, we don't know what Benton Harbor's going to come to the table tomorrow.
But I know I oppose the one that's out there now.
But what if Benton Harbor recommends a closure?
Well, the state of Michigan's plan for closure.
Don't, don't you want to wait till tomorrow, at least, and see what they propose to, you know, what they discuss?
Won't meet in July.
I would support the local community making the decision.
Or by email.
But I don't want to interject myself in a local decision either.
Well, how do we say that we support?
I already seen that the plan, it doesn't, it does not say closure, they're not doing a closure, but...
So we're talking about today about, like, not knowing what the proposal is based on.
But I know a plan that's out there that I don't, I want to clearly articulate that, that we don't support it, nor do I support any plan pushing for closure.
Without the local board's consent. And without them being at the table.
Well, you made a motion, you seconded.
We have a discussion.
We have a discussion.
We have a discussion now, right? So we're discussing it.
You want to write something?
Well, and I'm...
Well, but we can continue with the discussion.
Yeah, and all I know is, it is getting really late.
So I move that we make a statement just outright opposing the, the state of Michigan plan for Benton Harbor. The call for any school closure or district dissolution without...
Or chartering.
Or chartering, without the consent of the district. And I won't even say consent of, of that being authored by the district, that, and...
By the district or the school board?
More than, district's more than a school board.
But who the district then would be the spokesperson? That makes it real broad of you, if it's the school board, then it's, the school board represents the school district.
I always say the district's involvement in that, in that plan, in that dissolution.
All stakeholders, maybe?
Yeah. And when I think of district, I'm thinking stakeholders.
Right, okay.
But I don't know if that means that, and if that can be implied without being explicit.
How about, if I could, how about that we, instead of saying we oppose something, say we support all efforts being made to, um, the high school open, or to keep the school, the district in, in intact, that, that, and we urge the governor to take all...
Uh, uh, yeah. Add that to the road that you're going down. And support, yeah. I, I like Michelle's better.
Support all efforts being made to keep the district intact.
Yeah. To avoid any closures.
After a meaningful discussion, including all stakeholders.
Yeah, that sounds good.
To avoid any school closure after meaningful discussion, including all stakeholders.
Because that includes then unions and administration.
The board.
Board members, obviously, community members.
Can you please read it?
Yeah, see if this makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
"We support all efforts being made to keep the district intact and to avoid any school closure after meaningful discussion, including all stakeholders."
Without meaningful discussion.
Yes, thank you.
How about we say Benton Harbor area schools, because we're speaking specifically to them.
Yeah, we should specifically talk about which district.
Benton Harbor area schools, instead of the district. I'm sorry, I started us down that path, but it should be Benton Harbor area schools, instead of the district.
In the beginning.
You thought it was broader, but we went more...
"We support all efforts being made to keep Benton Harbor area schools intact."
Yep.
And, and who are the efforts that we're talking about?
And to avoid any school closure without meaningful discussion, including all stakeholders.
Yeah, that's true.
We support all the efforts.
Yeah, the governor's making it.
Whose efforts?
The local, the local board efforts.
Okay.
It's the local board efforts. Wait.
Benton Harbor School District, School Board, is that what they call themselves?
Well, well, let me, let me, let me, let me see what that, what does that say?
Say again?
Yeah, because...
"We support all efforts being made to keep Benton Harbor area schools intact and to avoid any school closure without meaningful discussion, including all stakeholders."
That includes all stakeholders.
I think, I think that, I think that that's okay as is. I don't think we need to get too, too deep into the, because I think that that's already saying keeping it intact.
Yeah.
So we know that we're supporting the efforts that keep it intact.
Right.
However...
Including all stakeholders.
Yeah.
That includes community people, city officials.
The governor.
Governor.
MDE.
MDE.
All hands on deck, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Yes.
Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstains? Two? You don't want to get in on the fun?
I don't know what the unintended consequences of stuff, sometimes.
I think it's a fine statement, I just don't want to make the assumption that they haven't completed.
Okay, thank you very much. Start and discussion, but we still have Nasby report.
Oh, please make it short.
The Nasby report is that Judy and I are going to new members training Thursday night on June 14th and 15th.
So we'll be there Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
Saturday, 14th and 15th.
And we are looking forward to it, and that is our, that's my report for Nasby.
Yay, good job.
Thank you.
Where is it?
Um, are there...
Alexandria, Virginia.
Oh.
For Nasby. I saw a board member, it was like a...
Are there any other board members who wish to comment this evening?
I just want to officially thank Fran. I got to go to the CAC meeting, thank you, Michelle, for not being able to go. Officially thank Fran. They have a whole lot of fun at those meetings, so I may show up at other times, so she's very gracious.
Thank you, Judy. Tom?
I, I just wanted to say that during public comment, the people supporting the charter grant, I think were pretty compelling, and I know Tiffany and Pam were absent from much of both of the, or both of the groups that came, and I would just encourage you to, to watch it. I think it's, I think, you know, I know there's some animosity, but there's a lot of parents and kids that are being held. I mean, you were there for some of it, I know.
And Lincoln King I actually taught at.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, I think there's a, there's a lot of good happening in some, you know, in some of the charters. So I mean, a lot of parents and a lot of grandparents are very happy and...
Thank you, Tom, and Cassandra?
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, though, and I, I did email you guys, I don't understand how, if, if there were criteria brought to us last month that we didn't approve, how there are already charter schools lined up expecting money. How is it that they were already in line to get money for something that hadn't been approved and hadn't even come to the board yet? I'm just asking the question.
What, what is happening with that? It was going to be some fang whip.
Yes, it was in the board brief, conversation with the Attorney General's office immediately...
immediately following the board meeting. Received guidance from the Attorney General's Office, divisional level of the Attorney General's Office, that said that the federal grant application had been reviewed by the U.S. Department of Education. They approved the grant. Therefore, we have federal approval on the grant application. The information that's in the federal grant application, that information was used to create the criteria that then came before the board for approval. But what the Attorney General said is, once the federal government gives the approval to the grant, then it becomes the right of the superintendent who has the authority to apply, receive, and disperse federal funds.
And I just want to, I have since reviewed the application. And it was indicated last month that this was not a planning grant, so that the issues that happened last time couldn't happen in this one. However, in the application, there is actually money set aside for planning, and it's $150,000 a pop. And just today, I did receive the 67 final reports for the entities that took out money and didn't start a charter school. And I plan to review all of those.
So let me just, thank you. Let me go to Tiffany, and then I'll come to Michelle.
Okay.
In my priorities, my legislative priorities, in the charter school one, I want to add stronger regulations. I also want to add that the charter schools are required to refund funding if the school is not physically open. I think that's important. So people are not just opening schools and taking the money, or opening on paper, taking the money, and then there's no school.
Okay, you know, one thing I would appreciate, if, you know, your recommendations are real good, if you could jot down, you know, your, and then we can get it on the right words in order. See, if you could send that to me, that would be great.
Okay.
Everybody that proposed something.
And then I wanted to, I wanted further discussion earlier. One of the things that I was going to ask was about amendments. I know that we made an amendment for the Sikh community. And I was going to ask if we could make a couple of amendments for the Christian community that was voicing concerns. But that kind of, you know. Got cut off. But I know that you did state that there can be amendments done. So I want.
We can continue to.
Were there recommendations, or what do you call them?
Linda and I were talking, we'd like to document the process for minor changes or for the board making changes and bring it. Again, generally, we don't amend the standards in little bits. They kind of stay, and then we open them, and then. There is a process, so we'll get that to you shortly.
Okay, perfect.
I have not personally used that process before. Linda has it, so that's why we're gonna. And it's your process, so if you don't like it, change it. But we can tell you how it's been done in the past.
Go ahead, Nikki, she wants to.
Is it typical after we pass standards like that, that it may be used up to like a year? Just implementation sharpened? That which, is that where the process is typically used?
Again, I have not seen us use this process. It's always kind of a big, like this, get across the finish line, and then we move to implementation. But I think there's precedent for it, and obviously, it was a desire of the boards. We want to make sure we have a way to do that. Another thing to keep in mind is that the, well, it is always within the board's purview to decide, I mean, you can make any decisions about standards you want. In general, we have the process of public comment to provide you, really, the board, with feedback on changes you might make. So there will probably be some consideration for how big the standards are and how much comment you want, or how big the changes would be, and how much comment you want. Part of why we want to bring you some processes.
And then, as far as the social studies standards, I want to state on record, you know, they have been forever conservative and Christian views. Which, like I stated earlier, I'm also a Christian, I get it. But whether it's the Sikh community, Christian community, conservatives, liberals, whoever, everybody should be a part of it. Not, no one community should get to lead the conversation on the standards. And they should be accurate. So if we're going to talk about history, and we're going to include Christianity, or we're going to include other things, it shouldn't just be the good points. Christianity, America, how it was developed, it was brutal. It was violent. Even Christianity, we had the Casta teen era. I didn't learn about that till I was an adult. But we shouldn't just have the good things about it. We should have open, honest conversations about it so that we don't repeat history. Thank you.
My turn? Yes, it is now your turn, Michelle.
I also wanted to talk about charter schools. Because I've had kids go to charter schools. I have had relatives teaching in charter schools. I have friends of mine who are, I think, the world of, who teach. And I have people that go to that. My beef is, it's not with individual people and their dedication and love of children. That is not my beef with them. My beef is, at a structural level, the damage that they do without the necessary oversight. And I look at, on special ed education. And so in Detroit, pulling this up from Chalk Beat, there's some data they have that goes to 2016, '17. And it shows that for DPS, in 2016, '17, almost 20% of the student population has an IEP. Whereas charter schools have 8.7. The average in the state is 13. They have equal numbers of students, pretty much. There is, and then if you look at the severity of this, and that's one of the things, if you have autism, you're 22 times more likely to be in a district school than in a charter school, 22 times more likely. Cognitively impaired, there's a similar, it's not as high as that, but it's 11 times higher to be there. Emotionally impaired, five times higher. There's, the more severe costly disabilities are because of the way they're structured. They also, because of the profit motive, they, the teachers that we love and adore, and the people that come here that are administrators there, are being, the money's being made by them not getting it. So their wages tend to be less, their benefits are less. They have, you know, no sort of decent retirement plan. So that's where the profit's being made. It's being made on the backs of the people that are coming here to testify. And that's what I don't like about it. Those people, they should be treated with, there should be a similar structure. And in other states, they have, they fall under the purview of the boards, of the local district, they fall under the union contracts. They are given the benefits and the rights to speak out. Well, not that we have those, what we have left after the, some of the legislation that's passed. But, so my beef is not with people who find that they like those choices. It's just that some people don't have a choice to go there. They cherry pick, they kick kids out. Some of them don't, a lot of them do. And, but I think, again, it's a structural thing where, you know, they're bragging about their test scores. Well, that's exactly why they don't want kids with cognitive impairment. You know, it's like, it's an incentive, the way the whole system is set up in this state. Like I said, my son went to a really wonderful charter school, which was chartered by the Macomb ISD. They had more of a connection with the special ed services that were, because they were with the ISD, they worked better together. But the way it's structured now, I mean, I, you know, I don't. And I loved it when Detroit had choice. We had these schools that, you know, you could learn how to, you know, fly a plane. It was a high school at our airport, in our airport. We had all these great programs, which frankly, the emergency managers did away with. But maybe because they couldn't, I don't know. I'm not quite sure who made all these.
Davis Aerospace Academy.
Yeah, yeah, it was great, Davis. And there's all kinds of programs similar to that. We have the Performing Arts School, which is a wonderful school. But, and that can all be done, those choices can be done in, under the umbrella of a district that is locally controlled by elected officials that I can go to and at least have an opportunity to have a voice where. Anyway, I'll stop, I'll stop. I just, I will stop, I promise. All right, it's 6:35.
Any other final comments from board members?
I just, and I don't know if we do this when you get to the future meeting dates, but giving input on potential meetings.
Yeah, get to that, I'm getting to that. Yeah, it's my, it's my, my final comment, yep. Okay, seeing no other comments, then future meeting dates. Next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, August 13th, 2019. It's a regular meeting, will begin at 9:30 a.m. Followed by the meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, regular meeting at 9:30 a.m. And then in October, on Tuesday, October 8th, the board will have a regular meeting starting at 9:30 a.m. We do not have a July meeting. On Tuesday, June 18th, at 10 a.m., we will be planning the August board meeting. If there are agenda items that board members would like to see on that agenda, you can let us know now. You can let us know in the very near future. And if you have future agenda items, we will listen to them now or in the future.
Oh, that's my cue.
That's your cue.
So the Xavier de Groot Autism Foundation, I would love to have the young man who's founded that group to come and speak. I've been wanting him to come for some time, and I did not get in on the agenda planning meeting. But the mission of his organization is to create and promote opportunities for people with autism through advocacy, education, economic opportunities, and humanitarian efforts. He did a really nice policing autism event at March in the Mackinac Room at the House Building. And so he's done, he's doing some other great work and would love to have him, and he wants to come. He's eager to come, so.
Yeah, I would second that. Thank you. Tiffany?
By then, some of the things should be shaped and ironed out for Benton Harbor. So the interim superintendent, whoever is in leadership, I would love for them to come and give us an update about where they are.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just kind of tagging on to what Pam just said. So last Friday, I was part of a group that was called by the Autism Alliance of Michigan. It was more than the Autism Alliance that was there. There were this, on the, anyway, the Civil Rights Commission, the ACLU.
Director of Civil Rights.
Yeah, there was, Ed Truss, that man was there. There was Randy Leopold was there. Both David Hecker and Paula Herbert was there. There were people from United Way. There was different advocates, I'm skipping people. But it was, it was, Totten was there, I said ACLU. But it was all different people who care about special education and reforming special. Scott Kay was there, Scott, I'll say it right before I, before my term is over, I'll say. But at some point, it was just the first meeting. It was a lot to cover and, but there will be recommendations being made. And I would love to have, at some point when it's ready, to have that, have them present what the recommendations for special ed reform might be.
We will add that to our list. Anything else? Seeing none? We are adjourned, thank you very much.